Okay, it's time to get started. And let me just say how great it is to have the greatest school board in the world with the greatest city council. I mean, it's really great, but I think when we walk away today, I got this gut feeling that we're all gonna, even, we're gonna see why we're so good. And that being the case, I want to call on our rookie council member, the baby council member, Ben Davenport.
You're gonna live with that for life.
I've called him that a long time. But Ben, you're gonna make the introduction. It's a pleasure for you to do this.
Absolutely. And while we're teeing up right now, I'd just like to say that I'm very excited right now. Today, more about the, oh, sorry, Matt. We're still trying. Still trying, okay. Well, should we hold up for a second?
No, we're gonna get going.
As many of you know, I was elected city council last year, actually, November 2014. And some of you may remember during that time, I spoke a lot about bringing abundant, affordable, ultra-high-speed internet to the city of Virginia Beach and ultimately to coastal Virginia. I'd like to thank the city council that I sort with for having to make me to support my resolution to form a task force to explore the formation of a broadband authority. It's been an interesting process. We've had some of the utmost community leaders in their respective fields involved with it. Right now, I'd like to thank Rusty Waterfield, I think I saw him here earlier. Rusty is the CIO of Old Dominion and is recently responsible for bringing in the Maureya 100-gig project, which is pretty outstanding and is going to revolutionize the way that students at Old Dominion are connected. I'd also like to thank Edna Colubani, the president of Ty ward Community College, who has been one of the driving voices behind starting this whole conversation and believing in the vision that we all have. Also, I'd like to take this time to thank Deputy City Manager Dave Henson. Dave Henson has been the driving force behind this task force and has helped us stay on track and has pushed us to levels that in just six short months, I'm pretty excited about, and I hope that all of you will be excited about after this. And then, I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank my co-chairman, Joel McDonald, who most of you know. Joel has been outstanding to work with. We have really brought about what we think is going to be something revolutionary for this city, not only for the city, but for the city's schools as well. We hope that this plan is going to begin to bridge the digital divide, and we'll learn more about what that digital divide is and how we can affect it. And last, but not least, I'd like to thank Matt Orbe, the city's chief information officer, who has believed in this vision from the very beginning. He comes to us from South Bend, Indiana, where he was phenomenal at what he did and helped bring about some extraordinary changes in the way that that city uses broadband. And at this point, I was going to introduce Matt Orbe to start the program, but I'm gonna tell a few jokes instead.
Go ahead, bitch man.
Well, without further ado, I'd like to thank Matthew Orbe, the city's chief information officer. He's going to give us a presentation and walk us through what this broadband strategy can look like. And I gotta tell you, I'm very, very excited. This is the future of our city, and the future's looking very bright. So, without further ado, Matt Orbe.
Matt, Matt, before we get started, I want to thank Joel for sharing this, representing the schools, and certainly thank you. I think it's grateful that the two bodies work together and so forth, but thank you very much. Matt, it's all yours.
Okay. First, let me start by apologizing. We're gonna have to follow my paper right now, and try to track this down. So, let me start by just saying good afternoon to Matt Orbe, the chief information officer for the city of Virginia Beach. I'm here today to provide you an update on behalf of Virginia Beach Broadband Task Force that was formed in July of last year. The task force was formed. Okay, let's try this again. So, the task force was formed after the city council adopted a resolution in March of 2015 directing the city manager and staff to explore the creation of a broadband authority in order to leverage network investments made by the city and the schools. We established a task force that are comprised of policymakers, city leadership, and educators. We started by creating a white paper to help members establish a common understanding of the federal, local landscape for broadband and to identify how broadband can benefit Virginia Beach and the region. Starting in July of last year, the task force met five times over the course of seven months. We also created a repository of information that task force members could access at any time. And we had a series of presentations that were made by task force members and a couple of existing broadband authorities. And lastly, we received a presentation from Blair Levine of GIGU. Let me take a few minutes to give you some background information on GIGU and Blair. We received a presentation where GIGU is a broad-based group of over 30 leading research universities from across the United States. Its mission is to quicken the deployment of high-speed networks to universities and their surrounding communities to improve innovation, research, collaboration, and economic development. Mr. Levine was a former chief of staff of the FCC and was one of the primary authors of the FCC National Broadband Plan in 2010. Mr. Levine co-authored with Denise Lynn a Next Generation Connectivity Handbook. This is a comprehensive guide for communities who want better broadband for their residents, businesses, and community institutions. It provides a synopsis of what's going on across the United States, and it addresses the most common questions GIGU received throughout its work with various communities. It contained information about the economic impact of broadband, legal and financing issues, trade-offs of different approaches, political challenges, and negotiation with private parties. This handbook became instrumental in helping the task force determine the strategy options and goals that I'm going to share with you today. It looks like we're getting there. So, the strategy options explored were to create an authority, expand the existing network, form a public-private partnership, contract the network out, or do nothing at all. And let me catch up on the presentation once, let's take a quick pause here. Get it on the big screen, will you? Yeah. So, each of these options have been enacted upon in various places within the United States, but guided by various state laws that differ from state to state. But before we could select a strategy option, we needed to gain a better understanding of several criteria. What was the current investment in fiber that we had today? Well, we learned that the schools invested nearly $12 million in their network in 2002. Between 2007 and 2009, there was approximately $15 million in fiber invested from the city. So, a total investment between the city and schools of nearly $27 million. We had to understand the capacity of the network. What was unused to date? Well, today, the city's in the midst of an audit that should be completed by the end of February. The audit will show us, allow us to determine the capacity of unused fiber assets, things like fiber itself, conduit, junction boxes, things that make up these networks. We also wanted to understand what was the coverage of the current network? What was the footprint? Well, today, the city has nearly 115 linear miles of fiber and is in the midst of expanding it to 75 additional off-campus locations. The schools have nearly 110 linear miles connecting nearly 84 locations. We then came upon this concept of digital divide. So, for those that don't know what that means, let me read you a quick definition. Digital divide is defined as an economic and social inequality with regard to access to, use of, or impact of information and communication technology. There are two main components called underserved and underprivileged. And although we do not have a complete picture of this yet today within our community, underserved areas are areas that may not have access to any and/or multiple internet providers due to the cost to build out services in specific areas, which is normally rural in nature. Underprivileged normally means that a family and/or individuals cannot afford to pay for internet connectivity and/or cannot afford the devices to connect to the internet and/or does not know how to utilize technology to begin with, which is what we call digital literacy. Public-private partnerships. I can tell you today as the CIO of the city that I have private companies coming and asking, do we have excess fiber? Can we partner? Can they utilize that? So, I believe there are opportunities out there today. And lastly, what is the broadband demand? One of the best ways to gauge this demand is to survey our citizens. So, currently, the city is working with Cox and Verizon on new cable franchise agreements, which provided us an opportunity to ask some additional questions pertaining to broadband. And although the report is a few weeks away, I wanted to share that with you today. So, we did a random sample survey of 900 residents. We had Cox and Verizon subscribers and subscribers to, non-subscribers to KTV. This provided us a margin of error plus or minus three points. Some of the early findings are that the broadband service is heavily divided between Cox and Verizon and that the respondents, 75% of them, were satisfied with their internet of choice, either being very satisfied or satisfied. For the residents who had internet at home, 92% said they had internet at home, with 8% saying they did not have internet at home. So, when you look at the national average, which in 2013 was 70% across the United States, and in the recent Pew Research Survey of December of 2015, down to 67%, Virginia Beach has a take rate of over 20 points higher than the national average. So, then we asked them, so, for the residents, what are you using the internet for? And these are just the top answers. They're not all-encompassing, but as you can see, the broadband services are very important to the economic function of Virginia Beach. People to work from home, do online banking, and pursue educational opportunities. So, for the 8% that do not have internet access at home, what were the reasons? 46% said they do not own a computer. This is back to that digital divide question. 22% said service is too expensive. So, we did some additional demographic analysis and determined that the 8% are likely older, without children in the home, renting, retired, disabled, or unemployed. We then asked, were residents aware of free public Wi-Fi in our libraries? And happy to say that the wide majority of our residents are aware that the libraries provide free Wi-Fi. We then said, well, how important is free public Wi-Fi to you as a resident? 77% of the respondents indicated that it was important at some level, with 1 in 3 respondents indicating it was very important, or 36%. So, after listening to all the presentations, reviewing all the information gathered, the task force came up with five goals: to provide a level of excellence in city services, to leverage the next-generation network for educational opportunities, to explore opportunities to create a unified government network, to leverage the NGN for economic development and regional opportunities. So, now, let's take a look at these in a little more detail. So, goal one, let's start by looking at the map. What you see here is the city of Virginia Beach's fiber network footprint. The blue lines represent what we call our core, our main hubs that connect our main sites, and then you have a series of sub-rings, which are the red lines. And together, we know that we can provide excellent city services if we invest in our own assets. Again, we're gonna connect up to 75 additional locations. These are fire stations, police precincts, libraries, rec centers. But we also knew that there were other opportunities that could be provided. And we also determined that we're gonna utilize a dig-wants strategy, so as new roads and utility projects are developed, we will include fiber and conduit as appropriate. Goal two, looking at this map, you still have the red and blue lines, which is the city network, but we've added the magenta lines, which is the schools' network. We've also added the locations of TCC, ODU, some of the higher educational institutions in Virginia Beach and beyond. And if you look at the upper right-hand, the call-out box, we have come up with something we called an educational impact zone, because again, this is all conceptual. So, what would, what could an educational impact zone be? Well, we looked at some census data, and we took two census blocks that had the lowest, median household income. So theoretically, these areas would need some additional help technologically. So, what we could do is potentially offer them wireless technologies, either public or private, to allow them to access the internet. We could work together to find those devices. If you remember, 46% did not own a computer, so maybe we could work together to find these devices to allow them to access the internet. And the digital literacy question, could we provide computer training between higher ed, K-12, and the city to help people? The task force then went and said, well, let's come up with a scenario. What if we did this? Well, we came up right away that this could facilitate educational pathways in high-demand occupational career areas such as cybersecurity and entrepreneurship. You could help transition the many military members of the region that could benefit from additional education and training opportunities. We could allow for greater public-private partnerships for research and technology transfer into educational pathways from high school through college, thereby creating a pipeline for the biomedical research initiative of Virginia Beach and the greater region. And we could reduce annual operating expenses, and these dollars could be redirected to student support and/or the development of educational pathways and training opportunities. Goal three, what this shows is the green, or the magenta lines of the schools and the blue and red of the city altogether as one unified network, which is shown in green. We feel the exploration of this could share, the city and schools could share assets in order to create efficiencies, lower the investment costs, and reduce total cost of ownership. But by doing that, we need to establish common architectures, establish shared services models, establish a unified maintenance contract, and collaboratively plan for future requirements and capacity needs. Goal four, this map, we've removed the schools' network. This just shows the city's network, but we've added these predefined areas, areas like the strategic growth areas, special economic growth areas, and targeted business areas. We feel that we could make these areas fiber-ready or connected. And keep in mind, this footprint shows where we exist today. So, we do run by these areas today, but through the audit, we'll determine how much excess capacity we may have to do something in these areas. So, we believe that we should have direct, make these areas fiber-ready by having access to dark fiber, establish connection points close to our neighboring cities, which again could expand out more from a regional perspective. We need to develop business plans and financial model for the support of the strategy and the middle-mile services, because I've already been approached about partnering and sharing of these assets. And I'm also under a non-disclosure agreement, so I can't get into specifics, but today, we are working acutely with multiple companies who want to run trans-oceanic fiber from Europe and South America to Virginia Beach. They also want to build a mini-data center fiber transmission facility in one of these areas, and if the telecommunications and the communications markets continue to grow, they would build additional facilities in one of these predefined areas. We also want to continue to partner and strengthen our relationships with the local service providers by offering them middle-mile services. And what that means is those areas, the underserved areas we talked about previously with the digital divide, some of it, it's not economical for them to build to some rural areas, but maybe we have fiber in these rural areas. So, maybe they use us to get to those neighborhoods, and then they build to the homes or the business. So, we feel this scenario, by being fiber-ready, an opportunity exists to attract and retain businesses, provide additional job opportunities within the city, and potentially lower connectivity and internet costs for businesses. And goal five, this map is exactly like the other map, except now, we are looking beyond the borders of Virginia Beach. We are looking to establish connection points. You'll see two little black houses to the western portion of Virginia Beach. We call them fiber huts, could be connection points, they don't have to be fiber huts, but just think of them as connection points, as our neighboring cities get their strategies developed. These are areas that they could connect to. So, an ODU could be connected, or a TCC could be connected from Virginia Beach now to Norfolk, to Chesapeake. So, now, we are truly growing this educational network regionally. So, what is the future? Well, we feel that this is what it would look like. This is a holistic map view of everything we just talked about in the five goals. This map shows a future city that utilizes its fiber assets to help enable the achievement of four of the six elements or goals within the envisioned 2040 strategy. We have, you know, we envision this having a connected community that provides the community access to broadband in order to stay informed and access resources they need, that we have a learning community that provides access to the best teachers and resources available, and one that connects K-12 schools with higher education to create centers of excellence. We have a diverse community that gives opportunities to all residents and helps close the digital divide, and we have a thriving community that meets business needs, provides opportunities to attract and grow talent in areas such as biomedical research and cybersecurity, and one that enhances innovation and entrepreneurship. So, what is our strategy? The task force felt it was wise to break it up into two phases. The first phase is to continue the course as a city, to expand the network. We currently have a CIP that's fully funded, again, to connect those 75 facilities, so let's continue down that path. Let's also, again, work with our neighbors to find these jurisdictional connection points. Let's work to, for the economic development opportunities in these predefined areas. We need to develop a business and financial model in support of this strategy, and we need to continue to develop our business relationships with the neighboring authorities and providers. And we hope that we can finish this trans-oceanic landing and mini-data center initiative. We're working very hard at that. We also need to collaboratively work together to identify and plan to address the digital divide, engage neighboring cities to explore ways to connectivity in region, and explore opportunities to connect the Go Virginia initiative. Phase two, although several years down the road, we need to explore the opportunity, again, to establish a common architecture between the city and schools, and reinvest those budgetary savings back into other technology initiatives. We need to develop a regional strategy, and we need to continue to explore other opportunities for technology collaboration in the region and with our current service providers. So, at this point, I would now like to invite a few of our task force members to come up and say a few words and share their thoughts about their experience. I'd like to start with Rusty Waterfield, who is the CIO of Old Dominion University, and then move down to Edna, Joel, and Ben. Rusty?
Rusty, we're glad to have you over here today.
Thank you. I'm at the tail end of a cold, so my voice is a little weak right now. Before I get started, I just want to say first, I'd like to thank, you know, Dave Henson, I don't know where he disappeared to, Dave, Ben, Joel, you know, Matt, for allowing Old Dominion University to be a part of, you know, developing, you know, the strategy for the city of Virginia Beach. Second, you know, to the city of Virginia Beach, you have an incredible IT leader in Matt Orbe. From the master technology plan that he has shared with us for the city and now the broadband strategy, Matt truly understands IT as both strategic for improving city services and education, and also an enabler for things like economic development and great regional opportunities. He's a fellow CIO. Don't let him go. He's a gem. He's good people. With regards to the strategy, you know, there are two extremely important foundations that support the strategy. The first is, as Matt shared, is coordinating and leveraging investments towards that strategy. It sounds obvious, right? If we're gonna have a strategy, why don't we coordinate, leverage investments towards that strategy? But it's not easy. Think about it, it involves significant effort around governance and architecture between different branches of the city and the city departments. It also involves working with outside entities. I mean, the transatlantic opportunity is incredible, but working with local service providers and working with utilities as they're beginning to dig wants, those kind of common, it's, there's a lot of work and effort that goes into that. And then, second foundation is thinking big, planning big, and investing for the long term. You know, leveraging a broadband strategy for economic development and regional opportunities does not happen unless you're really thinking big, you're planning big, and you're investing for the long term. They don't come about immediate. I'll give you an example. So, Dave mentioned that as part of our Mid-Atlantic Research Infrastructure Alliance, which is a collaboration of seven research institutions in Virginia, Old Dominion University made investments five years ago to implement a 100-gig network last fall. And we're already now planning and making investments for the next step, right? Those investments, it takes time, and every little investment counts. So, think big, plan big, and invest for the long term. You know, at Old Dominion, we believe that advanced broadband, advanced networking is an asset for our core mission of education, research, and innovation. And we truly believe in a knowledge and an innovation-driven economy. That advanced education, research, and innovation programs at universities like ODU, Ty ward Community College are absolutely essential for us to compete in a global economy, whether it be in areas like biomed, cybersecurity, computational sciences, data analytics, you name the hot markets these days. And so, assets like advanced broadband, advanced networking are crucial for us at Old Dominion University to recruit and retain and support researchers, and strengthens our opportunities, then, for businesses to partner in the research. And when that happens, when you get government, researchers, higher ed, industry partner together, then you accelerate the time to innovation, and that's when economic development can really take off in a region. And not only does the advanced networking support research to support economic development, it also supports our core mission. The core mission of Ty ward Community College of producing and developing human capital, right, in critical job areas. In ODU, a little sales pitch here, we produce the second-largest number of undergraduate STEM H degrees in Virginia. Say that again. We produce the second-largest number of undergrad STEM H degrees in Virginia. And with over 80-plus online degree programs, a comprehensive broadband strategy facilitates delivering those key programs to the citizens of cities like Virginia Beach. So, a comprehensive broadband strategy is critical to our mission, both research and education, as well as for the city, improve city services, and for driving economic development. But the strategy is only the beginning, right? A strategy is a roadmap. Strategy is something that you, a path that you have to take, you know, a step forward. So, I can, you know, what challenge? You know, the group, you know, here to continue to think big, right? Plan for the long term, and be willing to invest, no matter how small, to continue to invest towards that strategy. The development of strategy is simple compared to the implementation. It's gonna take a lot of effort, but it's a, it's a solid strategy. I applaud the city for, you know, taking this, you know, step, right? First, in the region, produce a document that says, this is our strategy, and we welcome other, you know, parts of the Hampton Roads region, you know, to come together, develop something even bigger. So, I want to congratulate you, City of Virginia Beach School Board, for recognizing the need and for developing the strategy, and the credible work that was done, and a document that, and a strategy, hopefully, that you can invest and will produce results and return on that investment. So, with that, I will like to introduce Edna.
Thank you so much. Edna, we're delighted to have you over here today, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity, not only to give you some of my comments, my insights into the work of this task force, but first, to ask me to even serve on a task force. It's been my honor and my pleasure to be on this task force. I've been in the region three and a half years, and I've been on way too many task forces, but when I'm asked by Virginia Beach to be on a task force, whether it was the biomedical research task force or this one, I know things happen in the city, so I'm always willing to accept that first and foremost. I joined the task force, actually, to begin with for very self-serving reasons. Our CIO, Dr. Robin Ying, had begun to work with Matt Orbe, actually, for about a year prior to this task force being established. TCC's need for connectivity, reliable connectivity between our campuses at a much more affordable rate, as well as a consistency and an increased speed, drove us to having conversations with various broadband authorities around Virginia. various broadband authorities around Virginia, most notably with Eastern Shore broadband connectivity on the Eastern Shore of Virginia, as well as the Mid-Atlantic. And we began to realize that TCC, in order to deliver the product to its communities, we need to have this type of kind of connectivity for our campuses. So that was my first reason. As I began to hear more about the research and the work that the task force undertook by bringing in people from different broadband authorities to talk about the economic development that occurred, the partnerships that occurred in their communities, I began to realize this is much bigger than TCC's self-serving need to have high-speed Internet connectivity between its campuses. And so since then, I have taken, so my role on the task force was primarily to take what this task force has researched and proposed to a larger context within our region. So I've had conversations with all the five cities. I've made presentations to the Virginia Economic Development Group. I have had conversations with the Hampton Roads Planning Council, which will take this up as one of its major initiatives for the region as well. And from the standpoint of, you heard the report on the biomedical research, this research park is not going to happen unless there is broadband connectivity. And the broadband connectivity, not only within the city and within our region to the higher education institutions, but the ability to connect with other higher education institutions, research institutions, all the way down to Charlotte and to Richmond, and with the community colleges tied into that as well. It's just one of these monumental, exciting endeavors that I encourage you to really look at with a very positive view, because what we can create here in Virginia Beach by starting with this broadband connectivity within the city, connecting to all of our municipal services, to our higher education institutions, and then beyond, as we're phasing out into the next phases, is just phenomenal. And I really encourage you to look at that with that point of view. I also want to put a plug in for TCC. Wouldn't be doing my job as president if I would not also speak to why this is important for TCC. TCC, as you may know, is the largest provider of high-demand career technology programs in the state of Virginia. We're also the largest provider of awarding associate's degrees to African-Americans in the state of Virginia, more than any other higher education institution. And you also know that we're the largest provider of education and training for active military, their families, and for veterans. So in order for us to deliver our services comprehensively in partnership with our schools and within partnership with our higher education institutions, sisters and brothers, we need broadband connectivity. One example where broadband connectivity is absolutely crucial for our partnership with the Virginia Beach School District is the designation of TCC as a Center of Excellence for Cybersecurity. Those students need to learn on broadband connectivity in order to learn how to operate in a cybersecurity environment. So it's a very exciting opportunity, and thank you, Ben, for bringing it forward as one of your legacy projects. And TCC stands ready to support the effort. Thank you.
Edna, we thank you for your support and work. Thank you very much. Joel, we're glad to have you speak next.
Thank you. Ben, it's a little early to be thinking about legacy, right? I'm thankful to my colleagues for the opportunity to represent the board on this exciting task force, and really appreciate everyone who's been involved in the task force so far, especially my counterpart, Ben Davenport. It's been enlightening to hear the efforts by many of our partners, TCC, ODU, and others, to provide high-speed connectivity to meet the needs of their communities, businesses, research, and education. Of course, that last point is of particular interest to me as a member of the school board. The question for me throughout these discussions has been, how can we best use the investment we've made in our fiber networks to better meet the needs of the students in our city? But as you've seen, we've made a significant investment in these networks, and with the school system really leading the charge on this by providing better connectivity to our schools, better services to our students at a lower cost over the life of the network. And I really appreciate the foresight of school administration, and especially the leadership of our CIO, Ramesh Kapoor, and the Department of Technology, who has been an invaluable member of this task force, along with our Director of Technology, Naya Patel. I view our fiber networks as the people's networks, and I believe that we should ensure that we're using these assets to the best of their potential to improve the lives of our citizens, and including exploring ways to use these networks to connect students to educational resources and opportunities throughout the city, including their homes. We're in the very early days of these discussions, exploring these opportunities and examining the capacity of our networks, and exploring ways to form partnerships that would allow us to reinvest potential savings or revenues in order to improve our networks and better connect our students. And I really look forward to continuing to participate in those discussions. Thank you.
Joel, thank you for your help. Ben?
Well, once again, I'd just like to thank everybody, and I'd like to tell everybody that this has been a major learning experience for me, and I think for everybody on the task force. I came into this dead-set on starting a broadband authority, much in a similar fashion as the Eastern Shore Broadband Authority or the Mid-Atlantic Broadband Authority. What became abundantly clear to everybody on the task force very early on is that the incumbent providers do an excellent job of representing this area, and that we have an opportunity to provide the middle mile to the incumbent providers so that we can share potentially a network. As Joel mentioned, we're very, very early on in these discussions. This is an informational briefing. No discussion or no decision is required at this point. However, the discussion has begun. People are talking. The transatlantic landing is major. I can emphasize that. We're very early on in those discussions, but people all across the United States are hearing what the city of Virginia Beach is doing, and they are taking note. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions. I'm very grateful to everybody for taking the time to listen to us. We will host another briefing with a major update, I hope, in six months from now. But one thing I can tell you is, we are moving forward. The city of Virginia Beach will be one of the most connected cities in all of the United States of America, and we're going to make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Ben. Other questions or comments? Questions or comments? Yes, sir. Leonard?
There's been a lot of discussion about broadband and public-private partnerships. I was wondering if there's been any discussions regarding the concept of net neutrality? In moving forward, broadband is inherently scarce public utility. Will, say, for example, emergency services get priority of, say, financial services or...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Net neutrality is a very important policy that's established by the FCC with recent regulations. I was wondering if that has been part of the overall discussion in forming public-private partnerships down the road?
Mary, go ahead.
Well, that's more of a legal issue that's kind of being battled at the federal level, right? And so at this point, we have not really addressed that net neutrality issue. We'll see how it plays out on the federal level, and then take that into consideration as we move forward with our plans.
Thank you.
Amelia?
I would like to applaud your efforts, bringing this forth straight from your candidacy on, especially addressing the digital divide. This is crucial, because as our city's growing, become more diverse, the military, the veterans coming all in, this is an opportunity where they may not have as much put in, but having this with the connections of TCC, ODU, maybe down, including Norfolk State, a lot of the others. This digital divide is very crucial, that we can all rise above...
No question, Amelia, and thank you very much for the kind comments. I would like to give all credits to the beginning of the discussion about the digital divide to Ramesh Kapoor, the city's CIO, and Joel McDonald. When we came into this, again, selfishly, just like Edna said, I had my own agenda. My agenda was economic development, providing fiber to the biomedical task force BioPark, providing infrastructure to different strategic growth areas. But once again, during the learning process, I began to understand the digital divide as it was brought up by Ramesh and by Joel, and saw that this is an opportunity that we have and a responsibility, frankly, that we have as a city and as a city-school system, to begin to address. And I feel very, very confident, just like Mr. Waterfield said, we are the first city in the region to begin these discussions, and I would almost offer in the state.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I want to thank everyone who participated in this presentation. Going on damage like that, anything? Joe?
I mean, we made a significant investment, what, 12, 14 years ago? And we're obviously hugely happy that we made it and are happy that it can be collaboratively utilized within the city for all of the citizens.
Aaron or Doug, any comment?
Yes, sir.
Aaron?
We're good.
Well, again, I thank everyone for taking the time. To me, this is something very exciting, and I could not be more proud of the presentation that was made today, and I look forward to this taking off. And I feel that you all have a tremendous amount of support to accomplish what we need to get done. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn.